Good evening, everyone. Caucus meeting, April 22nd, 2021. Adequate notice for this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act Pursuant to Public Laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in Esri Park Press, the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. It's rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in majesty under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, Lacey 150th Anniversary Update, Laura McDonald.
We are moving right along with our 150th celebration. Our Jeopardy Finals are Saturday night, this Saturday night, Gillie Park, 7 o'clock. Come and cheer on your favorite contestants. And this is the first really public 150th activity we've been able to have. So the more, the merrier. Our cookbook recipes are still open. Please send them in. We have plenty of room. Time capsule submissions will be taken from now until the end of the year, but we do encourage all of our townspeople and all of our businesses to get something into that time capsule. The photography contest is now open for submissions. I do believe that each person is permitted between three and five submissions. Again, that will be open through almost the end of the year, so you can capture just about all the seasons in that photography contest. Our garden walk will be taking place in June. We are now accepting gardens for submission. You just need to apply, and then we will arrange the garden walk with your address as well. The geocaching will open on May 1st. We will have a health and music festival in June at Jones Road. We encourage all the gyms, the fitness studios, the dance studios, karate, all to reach out to recreation so that they can be involved. We will have live music and healthy food choices while we're there. Again, that's at Jones Road in June. We do have several restaurants who are participating, and we are getting ready to unveil some special 150th cocktails that will be being served. And we're hoping that they will also create some mocktails for those under the age of 21. We still have flags. We have lots of flags, and we'd like all of our businesses and our townspeople to get involved in what we're calling "You've Been Flagged." All of the businesses in town and the townspeople, when you hang your flag, you purchase your flag at recreation, you hang your flag, you either take a picture or will come out and take a picture, and you will receive some publicity on our Facebook page. We have articles of clothing that are also being sold. We need volunteers. We need people on the ground. We need people to help with events. Those are all things that we're looking for volunteers throughout the year. You don't have to give us hours and hours every week. If you just have one specific activity you'd like to be involved with, just contact Recreation would be more than happy to have you help us. You can reach the 150th link at thelacytownship.org website. Just look for the 150th link, click on that, and you'll get all the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who is on playing cards tomorrow, this weekend?
Mayor.
Okay, so, scratch. Item number two. Item number three, proclamation for Eagle Scouts. Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation. Mr. Charles Elmer, stand up. Proclamation in the office of the mayor. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scouts is one of the highest honors a member of the Boy Scouts of America can receive, and whereas only 4% of all Boy Scouts receive this honor, and whereas in order for Charles Elmer to receive this rank, he created an outdoor classroom for the Lacey Township Middle School, complete with desks, benches, and landscaping for the enjoyment of teachers and students for outdoor learning. And whereas Charles Elmer, his fellow scouts, the leaders of Boy Scout Troop 156, as well as family members and friends, donated approximately 463 hours to complete this project. And whereas Charles received donations from various businesses throughout our town, as well as from friends and family members, to fund this project. And whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, Governor of New Jersey, the Senate, the State Senate, the General Assembly, and the Ocean County Board of Commissioners. And whereas the mayor and township committee wished to commend and congratulate Charles Elmer on receiving this high honor. And whereas the mayor and the township committee would like the accomplishments and dedication of this young individual to be example, to be an example for all those involved in scouting, and thank him for a project well done. Now therefore, I, Peter Curatola, mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and our township committee, honor Charles Elmer for his outstanding accomplishments and encourage other scouts to follow his example. Congratulations. For your 463 hours, I have a mug for you. It's got the whole budget. It's beautiful, huh? A 463-hour mug. Original copy of the proclamation, and it's well deserved. You want to picture real quick? Proclamation. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is one of the highest members in honor of the Boy Scouts of America can receive, and whereas only 4% of all Boy Scouts receive this honor, and whereas in order for Brody Ryan Morris to receive this rank, he raised funds and led it team to create a monarch mission to serve as a habitat for the monarch butterflies and to serve as a teaching tool for the Save Barnegat Bay organization. And whereas Brody Ryan Morris, his fellow scouts, and leaders of Boy Scout Troop 26, as well as family members and friends, donated approximately 612 hours to complete this project. And whereas Brody received monetary donations from various sponsors through a newsletter created by himself, and whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, the Governor of New Jersey, the State Senate, the General Assembly, and the Ocean County Board of Commissioners. And whereas the mayor and the township committee wished to commend and congratulate Brody Ryan Morris on receiving this high honor. And whereas the mayor and the township committee would like the accomplishment and dedication of this young individual to be an example for all these, those involved in scouting, and to thank him for a project well done. Now therefore, I, Peter Curatola, mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and our township committee, honor Brody Ryan Morris for his outstanding accomplishment and encourage other scouts to follow in his example. Brody, you're a 612-hour mug. You're in the lead. I don't know what the protection.
Fill it for him.
Yes, at least have something in it. Let's take a picture real quick, bro. Quinn Larson Waters, stand up, please. Propclamation. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors a member of the Boy Scouts of America can receive, and whereas only 4% of all Boy Scouts receive this honor, and whereas in order for Quinn Larson Waters to receive this rank, he constructed the Mill Pond Elementary Field Bridge, which is a 40-foot pathway across the ravine leading from the school to the playing fields, which provides a clean, safe pathway for children and adults to get back and forth to the school fields. And whereas the Mill Pond Elementary Field Bridge provides handicapped accessibility to the school fields for all that may need it. And whereas Quinn Larson Waters, his fellow scouts, the leaders of Boy Scout Troop 156, as well as family members and friends, donated approximately 205 hours to complete this project. And whereas Quinn received monetary donations from family members and material donations from 84 lumber. And whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, the Governor of New Jersey, the State Senate, the General Assembly, and the Ocean County Board of Commissioners. And whereas the mayor and the township committee wished to commend and congratulate Quinn Larson Waters on receiving this high honor. And whereas the mayor and the township committee would like this accomplishment and the dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting, and to thank him for a project well done. Now therefore, I, Peter Curatola, mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and the township committee, honor Quinn Larson Waters for his outstanding accomplishments and encourage other scouts to follow his example. Quinn, come up. Congratulations. Come up, boys. Well, three of you guys are like five inches tall. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Would this be a good opportunity to make a presentation to these gentlemen about our flag program with Rotary and the assistance we need?
Oh, yes.
So please, please, take the opportunity.
Veronica, thank you.
I think that's your thinking.
This year, I'm president of the Rotary Club, and one of our fundraisers is to put the flags out on Lacey Road and Route 9 on six different flag-flying days. We think it's a really nice opportunity for people to show pride and their patriotism in town. We're having a little difficulty getting enough people. Some of our Rotarians can't maneuver really well, so we've asked some of the scouts if they'd be willing to help us out. We have four routes, so to do a whole day in and out, we would need eight boys or with their parents. But we would take anything, if you want to do take-in and take-out. Veronica's favorite day is 4th of July. She takes care of that, in and out, one of the routes. But we would really appreciate any help we could get. It only takes about an hour.
About an hour, hour and a half in the morning, and an hour, hour and a half in the evening.
I had a discussion with one of my assistant scout masters, and we're going to do a memorial there.
All right, all right, very good. That would be great. Thank you so much. And in turn, we would like to make a donation, too, to the troop. We would certainly do that. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. About that, some comments from our committee for our Eagle Scouts. Committee member McDonald.
Okay, first, before I get to that, there's a gentleman in the room here. He's going to hate me. But he was my son's scout leader. Cub Scout leader, okay? And was 24 or 25 years old.
It seemed like yesterday.
But no, I think when somebody gives 24 or 25 years, and his son is as old as my son, who's 31-years-old, they've been out of scouts for, what, 15, 20 years now?
Yeah.
And he has stayed in it. I just think he needs a round of applause. So let me just talk to Charles, Brody, and Quinn, the vice back there, and she'll tell you, the mice on the jeep Eagle Scout, where are the parents of these boys? Raise your hands, please.
Family.
Thank you. You guys. I think there's more pressure on the parents than there is on the boys when they get to this Eagle Scout stuff. It's a lot of hard work. They've got to organize everything and get it together. You've got to get your troop guys, the other troops out there, other vendors out there. And it's unbelievable, and the parents got to sit back and try not to intervene too much, but they do, and that's fine. I want to thank you. You raised good kids here, or young men, let me put it to you that way. But let me tell you a story about my son. He went into the Air Force. He decided that he, he went in as a firefighter. He decided he didn't want to be a firefighter. He wanted to cross trains. He's now a special agent with the Air Force. So when you do that, you've got to go meet with the base commander. Now, he's out in Idaho. And he walks in, and he's got his blues on, he's all dressed, and he's rehearsed. So he's talking to him two or three days ahead of time. He's got this down, rehearsed this whole thing. The commander sits him down, says, "Okay." Looks at his record and says, "You were an Eagle Scout." He goes, "Yes, sir." He goes, "So was I." And for the next 45 minutes, you know what they talk about? Scouting. At the end of the 45 minutes, he said, "Okay, go." Got shook hands, and he got the permission to cross train. So that Eagle Scout will open doors you guys haven't even imagined yet. And I'm telling you right now, and if you go into the service, guess what? You get a second strike automatically because you're an Eagle Scout, which is more money. Okay? That's what it basically comes down to. So if you guys go forward, and I talked to my son, he was home about two or three weeks ago, he still depends on some of the skills he learned as an Eagle Scout in dealing with, and he deals with murderers and things like that as a special agent for the Air Force. He still depends on some of those things. So those skills that you learned, they're life skills, and don't ever forget where you came from. Once an Eagle, always an Eagle. Thanks. Mayor?
Gentlemen, I go.
Sir, please.
Okay. Gentlemen, this is one of my favorite parts of sitting up here as we come and we do proclamations for the Eagle Scouts. And one thing, you know, I'm a little familiar with it, even though I wasn't an Eagle Scout, but I'm actually working with an Eagle Scout right now in Berkeley Township to do a project. And one thing we always ask is, "What was your special project?" So I'm going to ask, first, gentlemen, tell me a little bit about your special project.
My project was the bridge over at Mill Pond School. And that one, my motivation for that one was mostly to make the recess field accessible for children with disabilities, because I know a few children that have gone through the school and weren't able to ever go on the recess field because it was tough for them, either with a walker or wheelchair, to get on the recess field. So I wanted to make a bridge that would cross that, make it cleaner for all the students, because I always remember going through Mill Pond, and I would get my feet dirty, and the puddles run after rain, or even a couple days after rain, and attract all the mud into the locker rooms and then into the hallways. So that was, my main motivation was for the kids with handicaps so that they could go out there and at least hang out outside during the recess period. And the project was a big undertaking, and it started off just being a small thing that I was going to build.
It always snowballs.
Yeah, exactly. And it became this big thing that's out there right now. So that was my project.
So now the difficult question. You've got a lot of badges on your chest. Which was your favorite one?
I love to look at them.
Yep, okay. It's a hard one. We've asked before. It's a hard one, but you should be proud of every single one well-earned. Next gentleman.
So I built the monarch mansion. That was a, basically like a monarch waystation for when they migrate from north to south every season. So my main sort of objective with that was to go ahead and teach the public with the aid of Save Barnegat Bay about the environment that we are currently living, and how in certain ways you can end up helping by either donating or, you know, just learning and being able to spread this information as to, you know, keep it safe. Because I, myself, and everybody around us, lived on all of Barnegat Bay. It's a beautiful place, absolute love with all my heart, and I feel like that exposing that information about the environment and wildlife around it can really boost, you know, the better parts of it, keep it safe. Because with, like, time moving on and everything, we're all expanding and developing, we need to be able to, like, we need to be able to cherish all that stuff with the nature of Barnegat Bay.
Outstanding.
Other than that, the project itself was extremely hard to do. I personally faced a lot of challenges. I hurt myself.
What's your blood?
What's up?
What's your blood?
Yeah.
Okay, listen. Whoa!
Do surgeries later, I'm still finishing.
Did your first aid training come in?
More or less. And we missed some pandemic, but I was finishing it, so.
Nice. Very good. Next gentleman.
I tried to do the outdoor classroom at the middle school. Basically, when I started, I was just talking to my teacher. We used to go outside in front of the school and sit in the grass, and that's when I came to the idea that there's something in my back that's disarrayed. So if we rebuild it, it would be a good place for students to go. And then ran a plan of learning aspects to it. So I suppose learning clubs as well. But there was no learning, so it wasn't much to do. So bringing both aspects together, it was just a great idea to get everyone outside and be able to work outside and center learning.
Well, the three gentlemen, you explained this so eloquently, and let me give a little insight to everybody. You know, it takes so much planning to perform these projects because they have to plan it, have to get permission, they have to get donations, and they have to justify everything they do. So, you know, the parents can't write a check, and, you know, they've got to show everything they do in order to earn Eagle Scouts correctly or wrong. So, gentlemen, you did a fantastic job explaining what you did, and they all sound like very, very worthwhile projects, and as Mr. McDonald said, the future is bright. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
First, I really want to thank the parents. I know it takes a lot for you to do the things you do to make these fine young gentlemen a success in what they do. And to all these, I want to thank you from Lacey Township because everything you've done has bettered Lacey Township in all your things. But on a special note, there's one gentleman here that I feel a little bit close to because I watched him since he's been a baby, okay? And that's Charlie Elmer. I've watched you grow into this fabulous young man. My wife and my family are so proud of you and your accomplishments. Charlie, you're going places. The outdoor classroom that you put together at the middle school and all your volunteerism with the troop and all, and your parents do not go unnoticed. To his parents, Bill and Ann, thank you for raising a fine young gentleman. You are great neighbors and always lending a hand to this town. Charlie, keep flying high. I can't wait to see you as a pilot someday. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Whenever we have these Eagle Scout presentations, I always surprise how much time and dedication goes into the projects, and I always wonder, I wasted so much time in high school, I wonder what I was doing. But it's a lot of work. Yeah, I also want to congratulate all three of you. It's a tremendous accomplishment, a lot of time and dedication. You should be very proud of yourselves. And as Nick said, I also want to just acknowledge the troop leaders and the parents as well because it is an equal amount of time that you spend to get them to this rank as well. So congratulations, guys.
Now, close comments here about our scouts tonight. Mr. Devaney, eight years I've been up here, my first-ever event was a Saturday morning soap derby with you at Lenoka Harbor Fire Department. I think I got on on Thursday, and Saturday, I jumped right in, Curatola. And it was Saturday morning, and I said, "Boy, I haven't seen this stuff from the scouts in 40 years." I thought it was great. So thank you for building these young men. You guys, I tell you, you want to build a tree, start at the roots. And to see you, you young gentlemen and the parents here, it is a strong system of roots and trees we have here in Lacey Township. So thank you, guys, and come back anytime. Tell you, we're here for you, all five of us. Thank you.
One last question. Who's got the most marks?
Who's going to answer?
Morris.
How many you have?
I'm up with the view of 56 and 55.
Add a hundred and, how many wrote that?
There's like 107. Too many.
How many you have?
I have 55. I don't have to count.
I have to count. Good answer.
They're going to go far.
Item number four, Rotary Club of Fork and River Doggy Derby signage.
The Rotary Club of Fork and Rivers is having their annual doggy derby on Sunday, June 6th, 2021, at the Jones Road Fields. They're looking to put the lawn signs out throughout the community in advance of the event, and we just need approval.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor.
Hi.
Item number five, forestry management legislation.
I provided to you in advance information from interested parties, from the State New Jersey Forest Watch with regards to some pending legislation related to the forests and how it would totally revamp New Jersey's forest management policies for public lands. It would be costly to the towns, to the counties, and there is no funding in order to cover these costs, and it's going to just rip away acres and acres of land. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read the draft resolution that's attached to it, or if Mr. Connors can enlighten us on any of these bills.
I cannot. I have not had an opportunity naturally to review the bills themselves. They are in committee until they start to move out of committee, generally, that will majorize itself until it's ready for a floor vote. But certainly, with the information that's contained in here, gives an opportunity for the Ninth District Delegation to become acquainted with at least the position of the individuals that are advocating against the bill. So certainly, we'll take that into consideration when we do the voting of the floor.
Veronica, do you have to, has the League of municipalities said anything about any of these?
The League has some information on their website related to these bills, but they haven't come out and, you know, said anything. They did provide the sample resolution and everything that is attached here.
Okay.
So I don't believe that they're supporting it, but that doesn't mean it's not going to pass.
Right. It's difficult when things come down from Trenton, and municipalities left holding the bag, and it's an unfunded mandate. That said, prescribe burns when they're done the right way, prevent the forest fires. We know a lot about it because our neighbors, our good neighbors to the North, Berkeley Township, and our fire departments have fought a lot of those forest fires in our pine lands together with other departments. So we'll wait and see when it moves out of committee, goes up to the Senate, see what the governor signs.
Well, we want to obviously put in, if we oppose this, put in an opposing resolution prior to the governor signing, because if he signs it, then it's law. So he would need opposition before, to take that into consideration. I'm just not sure where you guys fall on this, if you want to allow this. I mean, because it's going to destroy our pine lands, and we're not going to have any input needed by the county, and obviously, we have more than 25 acres out there. I mean, the county just picked up 8,000 acres, you know, on the Grunetti Track out there. So, you know, they're going to end up being able to log it and to clear it.
Veronica, let me get, I didn't get a chance to read this.
Yeah, can we table it until, I don't know?
Yeah, I can table it till the next meeting. This is, sounds very important, but I didn't get a chance to read it.
This is, sounds very important, but I didn't get a chance to read it.
So I'll put it on to May thirteenth.
Yes.
Anybody have anything to add on to this agenda or no?
No.
Motion to adjourn caucus.
Move it.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Township Lacy Township meeting, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised by the Great Park Press in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Let's lift the flag and have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, and my nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice, law.
Item number one, first reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash ten, authorizing the bonding for the twenty twenty-one budget project and equipment.
Nor into Township Lacy County, Ocean State, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements in the acquisition of various capital equipment, appropriating three million thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of two million five hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars of bonds and notes to finance a portion of the costs therefore authorized in the Township of Lacy and the County of Ocean State of New Jersey. This is our twenty twenty-one capital, uh, budget, um, ordinance. This would be for remounting of two ambulances, one for Lenoka Harbor and one for Lacy EMS. Uh, acquisition of five police vehicles and the accessories and equipment for that. Acquisition of, uh, Public Works heavy-duty trucks and equipment, uh, pickup truck with a snowplow, two dump trucks with a snowplow, Baco and excavator, two, a Toro five, fifty-forty Sand Pro with field edger, a stand, stand-on aerator, and two enclosed box trailers with a total appropriation of four sixty-five. Paving of the northwest barnegat pines, phase one. Engineering and design of northeast barnegat pines, phase, uh, two. Improvements at, uh, Sunrise Boulevard, at the top of Sunrise Boulevard. Improvements, uh, at First Street and Route nine. Various park improvements including, uh, Gilly Park, Bamber Park, and Mazzara Park. Uh, Lake Barnegat Drive and Haynes Street Traffic Light Engineering, Municipal Complex Planning and Designing, and, uh, those items associated with that. And that, that's it for this year.
Move it.
Motion?
Move it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yeah.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number two, first reading of ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash eleven, creating chapter one fifty-four cannabis establishments prohibited.
Mayor, I'm pushing here to table this as we need further research on this considering. You just got this one Tuesday?
Well, you got it on Tuesday, and then I did send you another one that revised that yesterday. Yes, we're taking this one.
At two thirty-five. We need to go through this in more depth by making sure, because there's six different items on this that we need to make sure that we can do the right thing for Lacy. I second that.
All right. Well, I think there's a motion here, and, and there's an ordinance here.
There's a motion to table it.
There's a motion in a second, so now I need to do a roll call.
There's a motion and a second.
This is a motion to table the ordinance for further review. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes, and, and Tom, you know, we discussed previously that we're in no rush to do this. We've got time. Yes, we, there's a hundred and eighty-day opt-out time, but we don't need to take action until June. And all I'm asking is for, for more time. Um, I'm, I'm trying to seek information on this.
Weeks now.
Excuse me?
It's been a couple of weeks. Weeks.
Mayor, can you please control? Okay, um.
Well, let's see.
Wait, 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 wait. Mr. Curatola, I'm not, I'm not done yet.
You said control.
No, I'm, I'm asking you to control the crowd.
They're quiet. Go ahead.
So basically, as, as I said, we're in no rush. There are six items that we need to research on, um, and there are still, you know, that things are changing, so I, I see no reason why we need to take action tonight. So I second it. All right, I vote yes.
Mr. Juliana?
No.
Mr. Kennis?
No.
Mayor Curatola?
No. So we will act on this ordinance this evening. We'll take the first reading. We don't act until that. We're gonna take the first reading.
We're not, we're not voting on the second reading.
Well, we have to make a motion on it on first reading to move it to second reading.
So?
You ready?
Moving.
So, um, it's an ordinance, two thousand, two thousand, twenty twenty-one, number eleven. It's an ordinance of the Township of Lacy, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, repealing chapter two thirty-six of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled Marijuana and establishing new chapter one fifty-four of the Township Code entitled Cannabis Establishments Distribution and Delivery Service Prohibited, so as to prohibit the operation of any class of cannabis businesses within the geographical boundaries of the Township of Lacy and amending and supplementing chapter three three-five of the Township Code entitled Zoning, so as to prohibit all classes of cannabis establishments or cannabis distribution or cannabis delivery services as those terms are defined in the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistant and Marketplace Modernization Act known as Public Laws of two thousand twenty-one, chapter sixteen. Can I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Dykoff?
I'm saying.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
All right, this passes on first reading. Second reading will be May thirteenth.
Item, item number three, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash oh eight, authorizing the sale of block one oh one point eight, lot eighteen oh one, to the adjoining property owner.
In order to the Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing sale block one oh one point oh eight, lot eighteen point oh one, on the municipal tax map to Jose M. and Maria F. Santos, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, dash thirteen B, and NJSA forty-eight, colon, twelve, dash thirteen point two. This is a twenty-by-twenty lot that's, um, what, what used to be an old fire easement off of, um, Pensacola, being sold to the adjoining property owner for sixty-four hundred dollars. It must be combined and with their current property. This is second reading. We open the floor to public comment for this ordinance.
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number four, resolution twenty twenty-one, one, dash, one seventeen, authorizing the leave of absence.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the leave of absence for Allison Price.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number five, resolution twenty twenty-one, one eighteen, authorizing refund of, uh, coalition on affordable housing payment fee.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing refund of preliminary co-op payment fee issued by the Lacy Township Tax Assessor's Office. This is for property at five oh one Lake Barnegat Drive. The refund is in the amount of one thousand thirty-five dollars.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number seven, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, dash, one twenty, authorizing refund of taxes due to disabled.
Missed one.
Missed one, and I apologize. Item number six, resolution twenty twenty-one, dash, one nineteen, authorizing the placement of a lien on block one oh one point one two, lot twenty-one.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting certification of the Director of Public Works and ensuring cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at nine oh nine Sarasota Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of one hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-four cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution twenty twenty-one, dash, one twenty, authorizing the refund of taxes due to disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel twenty twenty-one taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veterans exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This will be on block seventeen forty-two point oh two, lot six, and block sixteen thirty-one point oh eight, lot twenty-three.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number eight, resolution twenty twenty-one, dash, one twenty-one, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number nine, resolution twenty twenty-one, dash, one twenty-two, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-two cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number ten, motion to approve township meeting minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty-one. Move it.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Item number eleven, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Move it. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Item twelve, motion to approve membership in the Loom Harbor Fire Company for Daniel Condrin.
Move it.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve raffle license application for the Women's Club of Lacy and the Lacy Elks.
Move it. Second.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor, Juliana?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first thing, I was gonna interrupt, I didn't want to interrupt the guy. I remember back in the day, we used to buy twenty of these with the property maintenance. And now we're pretty good that the economy, I think the real estate market's turned around. It's a great thing. People are buying homes and we don't have to go and do this. It's great.
Yeah, it has definitely come down a lot.
We used to have nine of them.
This is one of the repeat offenders.
Yeah.
And spring has sprung, so we'll probably be back to a few more.
It's a good.
Yeah, it's a big difference, yes.
Big difference. Um, I have just a couple of notes I want to touch on. This past Saturday, um, was opening day for Lacy Little League, which, um, I had the honor to go there, but, um, it was a great day for all of them, the children, and particularly myself, because I wasn't aware I was inducted to the, uh, Little League Hall of Fame, which that's, that's, that's pretty good. I mean, it's, uh, the kids, you know, I, I, having my son play through the league and, and being involved in it, a, as most parents, I see they're doing. And I thanked them all that day because they take a lot of time to spend with their children to make sure they get this quality. And the Little League was, and, and great, and everything they've done, all the years that I've had something to do with them, um, in, in either way, either coaching, helping down there, or donating to the Lacy Little League, because I believed in them a hundred percent. Tuesday night, uh, I had the honor to go down to, uh, the fire department was having down on Malachi Drive off of Beach Boulevard. They were having a demolition to train their, their people there. Uh, what a great thing. And, and I highly say, if you can pass it around, if somebody has, is going for a demolition permit, or they know they're gonna let the fire companies go there, that's the only time they can get their training for the younger people other than at the academies that they go to. That's a good thing to get into a home, to know different things. And we spent three and a half hours down there, and it was really good, uh, the gentleman that, uh, let them use the home, because he was demolishing it. They were able to simulate a lot of things there, so, uh, that was a great thing. I'll end it with this. Thank you to, uh, first, all the employees of Lacy Township. I want to thank them for everything they do throughout the town, um, including, but not limited to the Municipal Alliance, Public Works, the Police Department, um, Board of Education for everything you do. You make, uh, you, you make our job easier here too sometimes. Sometimes we all gotta do what we gotta do, but it's a good thing. Um, other than that, Mayor, I want to tell everybody, enjoy this. Spring is here now, for sure. I don't think we're gonna see, but today, thirty-nine degrees. When I got up in the morning, it was.
Didn't you do this much before about the snow and rain?
Yeah, but it, it is here now. I think we'll get some cold mornings, but that's a great thing. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We do have one add-on that wasn't written in. We have one.
Um, this was the add-on, and I did place it on your, um, the dais, and I did believe I sent it to you. And I said, this was, as you recall, last year, ordinance twenty twenty, dash, fifteen, that we adopted related to medical marijuana and zoning in the business park. Since the legislation was, um, adopted before the change of the law, uh, Mr. Connors feels it is best in our interest to re-adopt this ordinance, um, so that it's after the fact of the change in, with the public law. So it will be ordinance twenty twenty-one, dash, twelve. It's an ordinance of the Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, re-adopting ordinance twenty twenty, dash, fifteen, entitled ordinance of the Township Lacy County, Ocean State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three three-five of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled zoning, so as to establish medical cannabis dispensaries as a permitted use in the M-one business park zone. First reading, I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Kurtzall?
Yes.
Second meeting on this will be the thirteenth of May as well.
Comments? Mr. McDonald?
I'm gonna go to the deputy mayor first?
You do it.
You want to...
Well, well, we did. I apologize. I apologize. I, I do want to congratulate Nick on being inducted to the Little Baseball League Baseball Hall of Fame. I was also down there. If you want to know where the COVID spot in Lacey Township is, it's Clune Park. It's always ten degrees colder down there than any place else. It's always a great day. And, and you watch these kids play. Mr. Juliana's son and my son played on it. The first, I believe it is, Nick, was the first District eighteen championship team for Lune. And went, oh, went, I think, I remember, they went to the Sunnies and got beat up in, uh... Oh, up in, no, it was farther north. It was, it was a, and for the record, it was a really bad call at first base.
We was wrong.
I mean, so bad that the kid literally, and it wasn't my son, thank God, was a step past first base, and the umpire still run him up. And everybody went crazy. It didn't end well. So, but those are great memories that I have, even with my oldest son down there in the rain and the wind and, you know, they use these metal bats where, when I was growing up, there was wooden bats, and you hit the ball, this thing like came right up through the, through your arms and so forth. So, I do want to congratulate Nick on that. Just, I just think, spring has sprung. It's getting darker later. The kids are out, so just let's be careful. They're in and out of the schools and COVID and all that other stuff. They're trying to get them back full-time and so forth. And so, they're out, their energy's folded and they're out running around. So, let's just be careful. One other thing I do want to talk about is remember that if you have a party at one of our parks, you have to be out of there by sundown. Okay? Because we had some problems with one of our parks over the weekend, and, you know, it was like kind of cloudy before they got out of there. There was some vandalism done, which we are going after the person who had the permit for it. But just remember, if you have a party there, that's fine. Enjoy yourselves, have a good time. By sundown, you've got to be out there. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Committeeman Dykoff?
Thank you. Of course, I have to congratulate Mr. Juliana. Did you play Little League?
Yeah.
They, they invented baseball back then? But, you know, it's, it's, it's time, though. You know, it's, it's really nice, all these municipalities, and you read on social media, and I'm pretty, pretty active, all these municipalities are having their opening days in various sports, and it's, a lot of, a lot of programs were canceled last year. So, I know everyone is really happy to see this happening. I certainly am happy to see it happening for the children and for the kids and the parents. And, you know, we saw the Eagle Scouts come here tonight, and I think the nicest part of that is seeing the pride in the parents and, and their families. I also want to thank Laura McDonald for coming here tonight and updating us on the hundred and fifty anniversary of, of, of... The celebrations. She did an excellent job and...
Just made my life easier, yes.
I know, actually, Ms. McDonald asked me to thank her.
You should have whispered it.
Well, you know, listen, you know what? In the past, if you all remember, Mr. Clune was always the one, you know, we would talk and he would come afterwards, and, and he would thank our wives, and we'd go. So, any rate, I figured, you know, it's good for the goose, it's good for Mr. McDonald. So, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Committeeman Kennas?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the movies last Friday. I ventured out. Got out of my basement and decided to go to the movies. So, I went last Friday at like six-thirty, should have been prime time for the movies in Tom's River. I've been there many times, so with my daughter and her friends. And it was a ghost town. There was nobody there. We were in the biggest theater, I saw Godzilla Tom. And I was one of maybe ten people there. There was really nobody in the entire theater. It's kind of sad. I long for the old days, when America was a simpler place. But anyway, I was never a proponent. I was mayor last year during all the lockdowns, and I always felt it was the, that the overreach on the lockdowns was too harsh. I still say it's too harsh. But go, and, and even at the movies, the rules still defy logic to me, so they, it's sort of changed. I hadn't been there in eighteen months. I think I saw, I was there last, last December. But, you know, you have to wear a mask the whole time you're there, and when you go to get popcorn, there's a lot of, butter dispensary, you know, they hand you a cup of butter and a cup of salts, and you gotta dump it on your, your popcorn yourself. And then, you go into the theater, and I think it was like every third row was roped off, so you're miles away from anybody. But in the whole time, they have their, you know, they run the commercials before the previews, and they're like, must keep your mask on at all times, and, and must keep your mask on at all times in the facility unless you're eating or drinking. And I'm like, so if I'm carrying a water bottle, I guess I can have my mask off. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense anymore. So, anyway, I encourage everybody to go to the movies. Those are my comments.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to give a brief update. We try to sift through the numbers about COVID. As of today, there were twenty-six hundred and seventy-six cases in Lacey Township. That's since February of twenty twenty. In the last ten days, there's been about six point eight cases a day, pop positive, of people that were tested. That's sixty-eight people in ten days that are walking around with active or asymptomatic COVID. Sixty-eight out of our whole population. That's two-tenths of one percent. So, when people look at certain websites and they, and they get neurotic out of fear, I want you to sift through those numbers, and remember that those numbers are quantified going back fourteen or fifteen months. Today, for the first time, two thousand, less than two thousand people were hospitalized in our state. Take that number, took the whole two thousand against our state population, that comes out to two one-hundredths of one percent. So, as I said at the beginning with the Little League, which I thank you for inviting us this past Saturday, I think we're getting pretty close to victory over the virus. The county alone has gone over one hundred thousand vaccinations. That doesn't count any other commercial entity, any urgent care facility, any drugstore, any hospital association, HACAC, Meridian, R W J. So, there's a lot of vaccine getting into people's arms, and that's the way we're gonna beat this thing. So, it's time for, for fear to stop co-opting the message and start, like all my, one thing we can all agree on is to get back to normal. One interesting item that I did see in newjersey.com, the title was Fist Fights and Free Tacos. How crazy is the residential real estate market? Anyone you talk to that's involved in real estate, in and outside of Lacey Township, but especially in Lacey Township, they are bidding wars now. We're doing this, we, all of us in this room, when I say we, this is being done the right way. We're growing this town the right way. When people Google this town, they see good things. That goes to our residential market, commercial property, should all be commended. As to recreational marijuana, you saw me vote yes on medical tonight. I took a note, told the law, medical is the law, and it will be zoned down if there's an opening down in industrial parks. Residential, however, is a completely different animal. There was assertions made that this was sprung on people and it was short. In all of my memory, we receive as a board of your governing body, elected by the people, the agenda for this meeting Tuesday before the Thursday. This was no different. This is an item that's been in the news for years. I came to this board by then prosecutor Joe Coronado, who gave me a prohibition on recreational ordinance over two years ago, or one whole prosecutor ago. So, this, this is nothing new. There was nothing that was kept from anyone. I was put up here, my belief is, to protect the town. Yes, the town did vote for it. As our township attorney, who is also a senior state senator, had said, for me, game, set and match, before the municipal lines, before the chief of police, before our, our school board, it takes their time to be here tonight, and all the teachers, our seniors, so many other people, I heard this man to my right say that seventeen-year-olds and those under eighteen will become, quote, "Jerobo mules." There's no indictment here, let me be clear, against medical marijuana. Somebody writes a prescription for medical marijuana, go fill it, okay? But let's keep, recreational's a completely different creature. And I'm listening to the people that, and my own experience. I have been running Intoxicated Driver Resource Center for over six years for this entire county. I'm listening to our chief, I'm listening to the chief's association, stakeholders everywhere else. I think this committee did a good thing tonight. I think there will not be a fallout from it. People can gain traction on signatures and petitions online and offline. I went to one mass, I got two hundred signatures in one Sunday mass, one hour right before COVID broke. And then mass was completely shut down or cut down drastically, and in the beginning of COVID, that is even understandable. So, I want to try to move forward. There's no, there's nothing negative to say about anyone here tonight. I think we all think that we act in the town's best interest. When people looked at the meat and potatoes behind this law, when there were no protections for our police, when young people's parents couldn't be notified, these are big issues. Even if they change, I still ask proponents, why is it a good thing? Don't tell me why I'm wrong. Sell it to the people and convince it, convince them why it's good public policy for public health and public safety, and for these beautiful Eagle Scouts and everyone else, from our schoolchildren to our seniors that were here tonight. This board did a good thing tonight. I will not vacillate. People know exactly where I stand. I stand by my beliefs and my commitment. And that's where I'll close the town. I want to move the town forward in what I believe is the right direction. If people think differently of me, then I will be judged. But I will, I will sleep at night with my decision. With that, I'll open the floor for public comment. Sir?
David Di Eugenio, Pittney Port, Forkett River, and I came here tonight to invite you to a classic car show. The Rotary Club of Forkett River is having their first classic car show at Lacey High School in the parking lot, and would like to invite the mayor, because I know he has a classic car, and all the committeemen. If I could leave these here, maybe not later.
When is, what, what day is it?
May fifteenth.
It's gonna be Saturday, May the fifteenth, from eleven until three. Rain date is Sunday, May sixteenth. Should be a fun time. We have the food vendor, and we have the activities for the kids, and we have a good time planned for everybody. We hope, it's free, by the way, to the public, and if you would register a car, it's a fifteen-dollar registration fee, and that money will go through the Rotary Forkett Community Programs.
One thing, if I could, Mr. Di Eugenio?
Yes.
You know, I wasn't, I told this whole room here tonight, I wouldn't say anything negative about any of my gentlemen up here, but I will call out Committeeman McDonald, who, when he was mayor, went up the street to VFW and judged a car show, and promptly gave the prize to a seventy-two Cutlass owner, not because it was the greatest car, it was because what he had in high school. So, when I followed, as the, after that, I followed Mr. Committeeman, then mayor, McDonald. I followed him, and I was the mayor the following year, and the gentleman ran, ran up to me, "Mayor, mayor, here's the Cutlass, give me the trophy."
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because one of our awards this year is gonna be the mayor's trophy. And I hope the mayor will come and pick the car he likes the best.
Seventy-two Cutlass. I want Timmy to... Excuse me.
No, no, it's gotta be a bro.
Oh, yeah.
Seventy-two dollars, bro.
Gotcha, gotcha.
With, with the rag top.
At any rate, you're all invited. In fact, I hope all of you can come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Name an address, please.
Yes. My name is Hugh Giordano, sorry. My name is Hugh Giordano, Blackwood, New Jersey. I'm here today as a representative of the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, U F C W, Local one fifty-two. We're the official labor union, which represents cannabis workers from seed to sale, both medical and adult use. I wanted to say that although I'm disappointed that there won't be adult-use jobs in Lacey, I am happy that there was an add-on for medical. I have a point of reference, is the medical and the industrial park, is that a seed-to-sale process that would be allowed? Or is it just, have you defined that yet? For, for the industrial where it's been allowed for medical, is that the seed-to-sale process would be allowed? Like, they can have a dispensary and or a cultivation site based on...
Not a cultivation.
Okay, so it's just a dispensary? Okay, okay. So, just, one of the things I like to say is that in New Jersey, it's, we have one of the best labor laws when it comes to cannabis workers in the country. These jobs are from the seed-to-sale process, from cultivation to dispensary, will be unionized. So, what that means is living wage jobs, that means healthcare, retirement, sick time, vacation time, paternity leave. These are the type of contracts that we're negotiating right now in New Jersey with the existing medical operators. On top of that, these jobs will be built out based on the adult-use bill that passed with the medical bill, project labor agreements. What does that mean? More jobs for I B E W, carpenters, steam fitters. These are jobs that are not Democrat or Republican, they are working-class jobs. And one of the things that I would like to suggest, since you will allow medical, which is, I'm happy for the patient base on that, because I know that there's lots of seniors, the average user of a medical cannabis is fifty years or above, because senior citizens are tired of taking those pills, too, just like young people are. So, I'm glad to see that. One of the examples I like to say, too, is that in Canada, which is way past us as far as legalization goes on the national level, Launa, which is laborers' union, and I B E W both cover their members' medical cannabis costs, because they're tired of their workers being hooked on opioids and other drugs. So, on the patient side and the worker side, I am glad you're allowing, allowing that. Bayonne, the city of Bayonne passed an ordinance about three weeks ago, which lays out basically a local RFA of how you can accept a medical dispensary into your town. So, what they look at is environmental standards. Are there gonna be good folks and, sorry, neighbors to the community? Labor standards, how have they act, if they're a big player, how have they act in other states? You know, do they provide good wages and jobs to people? Also, safety and security. Do they hire veterans? Do they hire police to be the security? In our unionized facilities, we provided jobs to veterans and ex-police officers to have a job after retirement, because they're the best trained. And who better to secure a facility than a veteran or an ex-officer, who is also part of the union? So, I suggest look at the city of Bayonne's ordinance. It's a, and it's conservative, it's a very conservative ordinance for such a big city, if you want to see it. And, since the two committeemen had talked about educating themselves more, and I would like, and I think it's great, I think it's good to have education, among, even if you're for or against it, no matter how you look at it. The Garden State dispensary was the first unionized dispensary of all six when they first had them. This is during the Chris Christie administration. I would invite every single person, I know there's rules on how many people can be there, but I would invite whoever's interested to go see the Garden State dispensary. You can see the process, you can see who works there, educated, four-year degree folks, botany, chemistry. These are educated young adults that come from Stockton and Rutgers. So, I would like you to see that, and you can see the security, the security, too, of how it's regulated. So, that stuff doesn't go out the back door. We don't, we don't demonize our alcohol-delivery drivers, we don't demonize our pharmacists. We should not demonize these jobs. They are good people, they're educated people, and they're union members, and they live in this community. I appreciate your time. I know it's a big discussion. My phone's always on, folks do, just know I'm always around to have a conversation, ever. But just wanted to let you know.
I got a question. On your home delivery side?
Yes.
The delivery people, I had talked to our council about this, concerned about this happening in Lacey Township. They are unionized people, they're delivering?
Yes, so in the state of New Jersey, they will be. They won't be like Uber drivers.
Okay. Are they limited to the amount of marijuana they can carry in the car to deliver to a home? In other words, they hit fifteen different homes with one bottle?
Sure. The commission is currently working on the rules and regs. They had one today, again, I was on that. So, some of those rules and regs will be released as it goes, so I don't have the direct answer for that yet. But I'm sure that they're going to make it, one, and that's a, and that is a good security issue. I mean, that's something you want to talk about, because you want to make sure that my, as a union, I, I care about those workers carrying a whole bunch of stuff, right? So, absolutely, I mean, that's something that we care about. So, these are things that have to be discussed more. But local townships, boroughs and cities have a lot of power. Just like Bayonne did, they took all this stuff and they limited, they made it to what they wanted. And they, they also laid out the money, of the application fees, where it goes. I know that this, this is a family town, sixty percent of the folks in this town are, are married, due, I know, when I read the census. So, I understand that there's lots of families here, and that money can go towards that as well. And these companies will pay the money, because of course they want to get into a town, but that's good for the, for the town, for the city, for the boroughs. And you can control that, which is important, because local control is important. I agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? All right, thank you.
You first, sir. Mr. Bransford?
Yes, sir.
Joe Bransford, one thirteen Amber Miss Way. Good evening, committee and administrator. I saw on the agenda tonight, Holtech presentation. It didn't happen.
It was just a mix-up with the dates. The recre, we are, we're gonna be accepting the check for the fireworks, he thought it was happening tonight, but they're gonna do it next meeting on the thirteenth, with, when they present their quarterly report again.
So, we are gonna, we are going to get... We are gonna get some report from Holtech.
Yes, that's May thirteenth.
Great. We're begging for it, because the last time there was really a big public forum on this, I believe, was September of twenty nineteen in the, in the junior high school, when the N R C was here, Holtech was here, our local and state representatives were here. And I think the public deserves more transparency if we can get it somewhere along the line. So, thank you for that.
It's gonna happen. There's no way that, I mean, they, they've been above board with their information recently, and, and in the past, to be fair. So, they will give us an update, and we've already been assured that there will be fireworks, that will come at no cost to the taxpayer as well.
Terrific.
We're not bad at the N R C here, or anything else, but the next...
Of course, of course.
We'll just have representatives of Holtech there to explain. And they'll answer your questions.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir? Name an address, please.
Good evening. Dan Jensen, Forkett River, New Jersey. It's an honor to be able to talk to everybody and address the issue that's come up on the cannabis aspect of everything. My background is, I was a firefighter for fifteen years, medic for the same amount of time. I currently act as a director for a national group called the National, the National Cannabis Advisory Group. And I also own a company called Code Three Outreach, where I work with first responders, with P T S D as well as veterans. We provide education to the public, and we educate municipalities on these issues that come up. You're asking for a reason to sell this to you. And the reason to sell this to you is because there's a lot of people that are just like me. I was on prescription pills for most of my twenties. I lost most of my twenties because of the addiction that, that came about from that. When I was in elementary school, I signed my DARE certificate, and I carried that with me, literally till I was twenty-five years old. I, I hated everything that has to do with marijuana in every aspect. I got in doing security for most of the dispensaries here in the state. I was able to learn from the professionals. I was able to gather expertise on P T S D and look inside of myself. From the day I tried marijuana for the very first time, when I was twenty-seven years old, I was able to get rid of all my sleeping pills. It took my productivity up one hundred and twenty-six percent. It took my careers a whole new level. I have the ability to reach veterans, first responders, get people the help that they need, who don't want to be on opioids, who can't deal with the night terrors at night. I'm very happy that you're, you're opening your receptive to medicinal cannabis. I think that's very, very important. But I do believe that there is a route that can be taken responsibly and professionally to have a recreational dispensary here in Lacey Township. The people I work with currently throughout the state, they do beach cleanups with, with all their clientele. They go out, they give back to the community. And I just believe that if you would be open to accepting our invitation from Cannabis Advisory Group, we would love to take you to any dispensary we want in the state, see how it works, learn, learn everything that's going on. And we're talking about the Eagle Scouts and everybody in the youth that's coming up, up here. This is an industry that is going to provide opportunity for the new generation coming up. I've seen people who are making minimum wage that are now making up to six-figure salaries because of their knowledge in cannabis. And they're giving back to the community at the same time, and they're helping the people around them. And that's all I'd like to say on the issue.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You, you did mention these type of people who have these things, they, you yourself, you said, it's helped you out. You have a medical card?
Yes, I do.
Rest of them people can get medical cards?
Yes, they can, absolutely.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely, but...
Really, that's what you're basically talking about, is medical marijuana?
Well, I am talking about medical marijuana, but there are some people that are not comfortable getting their card, for whatever reason. And that's where the opportunity of adult use comes into play.
To help what?
Excuse me?
To help what? To help what?
If somebody doesn't want-
And I'm not being sarcastic. I'm just trying to get to what you're trying to say here because you're, you're leaning toward a lot of the medical and that's what you're talking about, but you're, you know.
When it comes to, when it comes to adult use, there's a large population that just does not want to deal with doctors at this point. They don't want to have to fill out government forms, you know, for whatever reason. And that's where the adult use side comes in. So, if somebody would like to partake in the comfort of their own private residence, they have that ability.
I'm not, I'm not going to get into a long dance with you, but I will assure you that there's no one up here. If someone has a prescription, we were very clear and we voted affirmatively-
Absolutely.
-for medical, you don't want to hurt any senior PTSD, any veteran. That's not anyone's intention.
Yep.
But when you do a profit and loss statement and you talk about 1% of a million dollars, that's 10,000 bucks. Now, pay overtime for police, for our police department for about six weeks maybe. There's a lot to talk about here and I've taken a very deep dive into it. In fact, it's, was a large part of my career for a long, long time. So, I think tonight was a good compromise. But as far as the future goes, my vote's solid. And I don't, I don't speak for the other four gentlemen, but because this is a committee form of government and the mayor is one of five. And I appreciate you, but I want you to know and anyone else that's on medical marijuana or gets prescribed to it, that's between you, a physician, as far as being able to engage in adult use. There will be a couple of towns here that will have it and no one will have to drive far to get it. So, that's where, again, I don't want to get into a deep, deep debate, but when you talk about dollars and cents, numbers just aren't there. But I appreciate your comments.
Completely understand that and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Please, Ms.? Name an address, please.
Hi, Donna McAvoy, Spar Drive, Forkett River. I'm here tonight to represent the entire Board of Education. We had a meeting Tuesday night and we wanted to take action. Unanimously, we voted to have an ordinance on our, for ourselves, a resolution to oppose the retail sales of medical marijuana in Lacy. And like I said-
Recreational.
Recreational in Lacy. And it was unanimous. So, we have a resolution, whereas the Lacy Township School District takes a stand in recognizing that the retail sale of marijuana takes a huge step backward on the path of ensuring children are aware of both the short-term and long-term consequences of drug and alcohol use. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lacy Township Board of Education does not support the retail sale of marijuana within the borders of Lacy Township. And it was seven yeses to it. We just feel it's a detriment to the children of the township. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No further business, you see.
We're going to adopt the resolution 2021-123, a resolution attached with Lacy County Ocean State and Jersey, authorizing the Committee of Executive Assessors to discuss matters of personnel and pending litigation matters of real estate.
Move it.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.